A full house, so we're going to start on time. And we're going to end on time, and ending on time is all about quality, not quantity. However, I do know I'm going to get kicked out of here by 12 because lunch and all these other activities happening. So you don't mess with certain activities as I've learned, and that's food and bingo. Appreciate y'all coming out. My intent is to continue to do these quarterly, just like I've been trying to do my newsletters quarterly as well, to share with you what's going on in the community. And then really, more importantly, is get your feedback. Get your ideas, your thoughts, questions, allowing us to answer what ground truth is today, and then where we're going tomorrow or in the future. I do have a handful of folks with me. Let's see, Doug Brown from DPW, Chris Hein from Land Resource Management, Celine Steckel from Citizen Services, Tiffany Fossett from Planning, where's my boss lady, Roberta Wyndham from the Administrator's Office, the Administrator, Jeff Deguetz, who doesn't want to play or be near the others from Parks and Rec. And then if any hard or difficult questions occur, I will be hiding right behind our good sheriff and his team over here. But we do have a lot to cover. What I'd like to do first is take about 10, 15 minutes on what's on my mind. And what I like to do is, I like to do things geographically. You know, looking at District 5, we go from the Howard County line in the south up 32, all the way across 26, 32 to the reservoir. And then from east to west, the Baltimore County line, the reservoir, to 97, roughly. So going from 32 northbound, the National Guard Readiness Center is complete and is open. It's the Major General Linda Singh Readiness Center. Opportunity for the National Guard to be trained and prepared in deployment, you know, so that's good opportunity for us here in Carroll County. To the right of 32, past Freedom Park, past the American Legion on Slacks Ave, we have the Veterans Home that is going to be built. That is about $180 million to $200 million facility that should open around 2026. 140 beds, state of the art, with dialysis, two floors, funded by the state and from the feds, nothing from us. Looking at about 180-person workforce, which can come from Carroll County. So I am talking to McDaniel and Carroll Community College and CCPS on opportunities to grow a staff to be a part of that VA home in 20, around 2026. I met with the Governor-elect, who is being inaugurated tomorrow. I met with him a couple of weeks ago, and I highlighted the VA home because it's currently in the budget. When Governor-elect Moore comes into office, he has two days to accept the budget. So I don't want that to leave the capital budget, and they shouldn't. So, let's see. Intersection 3226, continue to highlight that. Having little problems here. Continue to highlight that with State Highway. Bennett intersection being done. Then if you make a right on Bennett, the Beatty property. We've been talking about the Beatty property for quite some time. The Beatty property currently is no longer under contract. It was under contract with St. John Properties and is no longer under contract with St. John Properties. We'll see what happens next, whether St. John comes back to the table or another potential developer could come in to work with the Beatties in purchasing the Beatty property. Going east to west, from the reservoir over, and I'm sure we're going to hear more about this, because you're going to have some questions, about the Carroll Town Storage Facility. It's a piece of property that is under contract with a company out of Baltimore County to build a storage facility. The intent is for them to build a five-floor storage facility. I met with a developer and we're looking at potentially taking one of those floors and putting it underground, so it's no longer 50 feet up in the air. But even with that said, they have a long ways to go. They met in October for the technical review, and they have about four or five items that are very critical before they go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a concept. Riden Hour is one of them, because State Highway does not want ingress egress off of the State Highway. So what's on the backside is Riden Hour. So extending Riden Hour, but if you extend Riden Hour, now you're looking at going into somebody's property. And we don't want to go into somebody's property. So they have quite some, quite a ways to go, and I have more details on that. The Zable property, I know I got Jason in the back, he'll highlight the activities happening with the Zable property, a couple of issues that we're continuing to talk about. One of them is Prothera Road, and we're going to answer the questions that we have right now. We had a very good meeting with my team and Elm Street Developers last week? Yeah, last week. And, you know, I think we're getting closer to what makes best sense for the community, but we'll talk more about that. Some of you, some of you, no. Hello? Chris? Chris? Some of you are interested in solar, and we're going to be talking about solar, and some of the challenges associated with solar. Thanks. Some of the challenges associated with solar. The biggest challenge we have associated with solar is that the state is directing us what we can and cannot do regardless of our zoning here in Carroll County. So instead of the state coming in and saying, "You will do something," the focus is, thanks. You're a pain in the neck. The focus, and that's on tape, okay, and that was Chris Swam, who is a pain in the neck. So, the deal with solar is, sometimes it's better to tell our own story and create opportunities here in Carroll County, so the state and others don't come to us and say, "You will do it this way." That's the intent of what we're trying to accomplish with creating these solar opportunities here in Carroll County. Currently, I think there's about 10 solar requests that are at the county right now, and we'll talk more about that, and that comes under Chris Hein, and he can definitely give you more details. Ag preservation. We're really proud that in Carroll County, we are leading the states and we are one of the top in the country when it comes to ag preservation overall for Carroll County. We've had a goal since 1980 to have 100,000 acres preserved. In other words, 1/3 of Carroll County property preserved in perpetuity with ag preservation. The challenge is, we're a growth area down here in Freedom. We don't have those opportunities currently with our own code. That's something that I have the opportunity to talk to my colleagues and see, does that make sense? Can we look at some of the other properties in the Freedom District, and does it make sense to preserve them into ag? Currently, there's about six properties that are 100 acres or above farmland here in the Freedom District, and about another 15 that are about 80 acres and above. Total about 40 or 50 that are 50 acres and above here in the Freedom District. We'll talk about the budget as much as you want. There's two parts to the budget, and sometimes this gets a bit confusing. There's the capital, which is bricks and mortar, like building the Sheriff's Department is a capital project. Then there's what's called ongoing money, which we think of salaries. How do you pay somebody year to year? That's an ongoing expense. So we forecast out our budget to meet those ongoing expenses. Regarding ongoing expenses, we have about $550 million, give or take, dollars in that operational budget. Out of that 550 million, we have probably about 90 to, close to 95% that is nondiscretionary. In other words, we will do the things that we must do. Paying for our schools, you know, our administrators, or the teachers, the salaries with the schools, about 48% of the operational budget goes to our schools. A large portion goes to our Sheriff's Department. A large portion goes to our fire EMS that we just stood up. So those are all nondiscretionary dollars. So then the question is, what do we do with that 5%, 7% of discretionary dollars? In addition to that, we have the capital budget, which is again those bricks and mortars. Those are projects like the Tech Center, like East Middle, East Middle School, like the Sheriff's Department, or the State's Attorney's New Office Complex. Those are requirements that have been levied on us over years, and we've decided to put money towards them for the out years. So we're kind of locking in those capital dollars for those others or roads. How do we keep our roads safe? Sometimes we do it through changing the road itself, so like Georgetown is making a circle on Georgetown and London Town Boulevard, because that hairpin turn, it stinks. I mean, it's so dangerous. So making a circle right there is one of those targeted using capital projects. Schools, as far as you want to talk, we'll talk about schools. I do welcome Mr. Steve Whistler, or Dr. Steve Whistler, part of our Board of Education. So he'll answer all the tough questions when it comes to schools. We had a really good conversation with the Board of Education. Again, I think it was last week, it was a joint meeting with the Board of Commissioners and Board of Education. The newspaper article that came out above the fold sensationalized a couple of things that occurred. It sensationalized the idea of raising taxes to meet the demands in the schools. I am more than happy to talk to you about what was said by me, and then also what the intent was during that meeting when we talked about taxes. The fact is, taxes have not been raised here in Carroll County for about 10 years. They went down two cents, and then they went down another cent in 2013, down to where it is right now, which is 1.01 something, give or take. So if we added pennies to that, that three pennies, it would go back to where it was about 11, 12 years ago. But we can talk more about that if you'd like. And that's property tax, and then income tax we could talk about. But the fact is, the expenses that the school came to us with, the CCPS and Board of Education, with both the blueprint, which is directed by the state, which are unfunded mandates, along with the requirements that they have, it is going to be very difficult to fund. The schools have been doing things with, I mean, incredible work. We have incredible schools, but the bottom line is, they're at a point where they've tied a knot at the bottom of the rope, and they're hanging on with what they have. So now we got to look at what, you know, what that looks like in addition to the blueprint, and we'll talk more about that. And then the last thing I want to share with you is dealing with crime. Besides me thinking that we have the best, you know, law enforcement partnership in the state, I think it's proven itself with the SROs in the schools, the commitment that the sheriff and his team has made to Carroll County in all, all levels, from the schools on up, really shows itself. We have a couple of very large stores here in District 5. There's a lot of activity happening in the Eldersburg area. It's considered what they call District 9 within the law enforcement, within the Sheriff's Department, and believe it or not, it is the lowest crime district in Carroll County, or at least it was, still is. It is the lowest...
We just want to tell you exactly what's going on and where the crime is at.
So what I want to do is hand it off to Sheriff Dewey to talk to you about what's going on. And I also want him to highlight, besides just the crime, is the concerns that we all have with the drugs, with fentanyl, with the opioids, and what ideas are that we could do better, especially in the school system. So, Sheriff?
Appreciate it. I'm not sure that this is...
I don't know.
It is still working. So Sheriff Dewey, I'll introduce my co-curator, Richard, is the under sheriff. If you call in any complaints for speeding or any issue, he's kind of the gun court captain, he oversees control. So he's had all the deputies that run around, and he starts the Glenn Day, which might happen, in charge of special operations.
You sit over here for...
Court security, civil, all the other stuff that the sheriff's office does. I'm going into my current term as sheriff. I'm homeboy here. I graduated from South Carroll High School. Went through elementary, my mother drove to school, lost, went to high school for a number of years. So I grew up in serious, I dealt well. I'm a retired captain with the Maryland State Police and patrol at every level in Carroll County. So I've been policing every part of Carroll County for the better part of 30, probably years. My piece of the budget that the commissioner talks about is around $31, $32 million, and I do all of the jail. I oversee the detention center in Westminster, all of the law enforcement operations for the county, court security, and all the civil that takes place throughout the county when it comes to the peace orders, protective orders, RIS, those sort of things that are civil processing. So it's a, it's a big operation, not the budget that some of my colleagues recently had, which are in the 100 millions to do those operations. So we do an awful lot with, I think, and I think the budget, the commissioners have been very good to my office over the last several years. When it comes to crime that takes place and what we call criminalized expense, it's about exactly what Commissioner Rothing covers in his district. I've said this before every time I come here, the Achilles that I have in this area and every other area in Carroll County is simply theft, and the amount of it. Retail theft that occurs at primarily Elderford Commons, Walmart, Alta, some of the other stores here, but primarily Walmart and Alta. And I'm sorry to work with those stores, they are a problem. And the problem is their policies when it comes to securing their own property. I've said this before, that organizations like Walmart, whether, to give you a good example, if they gross $100 million a year at this Walmart, they have ride halls, they have tree mages and vaults and those sort of things. Their acceptable amount of loss could be upwards of $1 million a year at this particular Walmart. My acceptable amount of loss at that Walmart is $0 a year. So at some point, we're in conflict with theft that occurs there, and so we have to interact with Walmart and Alta. That seems to be the biggest issue along the 26th Quarter. The other thefts that occur here are always from generally unlocked motor vehicles, and at times, motor vehicles broken into, windows mismatched. The reason those windows are mismatched is because there's something highly valuable that someone sees in that vehicle that they're willing to take that chase, say reaching or at a pocket, local computer, those sort of things. Generally, it's just hunting for orders that are open at night. And then we have periodically shed burperings that take place. And those are generally targeted towards ATVs, offering vehicles that somebody wants to steal. The way they're stealing them now is, how do they know? And we see this, we're stunned at, that in the middle of nowhere in Carroll County, they find a shed that has two ATVs in it that they can quietly steal in the middle of the night. How do they know that they're there, these folks that want to come along and steal them? What we're seeing now is that folks go to Buzz Creek and some of these other places around the state to ride these ATVs, and GPS is so small and discreet now, they kind of slap these real-time GPSs on motorcycles as they're walking by them, and then they can track them to, down to the foot, and they go into that particular shed and seal it quietly and leave. And that's predominantly what we see. We also know we have traffic issues, Danville, Bennett, Johnsville, Ridge, Marysville, all these roads we know. We do a lot of traffic enforcement on them, and we also work with our traffic engineer to try and solve the engineering problems. We consider all day, every day, and write ticket after ticket after ticket, and that's kind of fruitless. And you may think that ticket money comes back to me as sheriff, not one dime does. Not one single dime comes back to this here station when it comes to paper writing. Why do you say it? Because it goes to the Governor General Fund. Any ticket that's written is a city Maryland citation, it goes to Governor General Fund for discretionary funding that way. It is somewhat inherently corrupt if all the money comes back to me, and I'm just going to sit there all day, every day, write tickets so that I get fed and happy and wealthy, and that just simply does work in the grand scheme of things. So in this area, I think in 2022, our traffic enforcement was up. We broke, or made, traffic stops, just under 5,000 traffic stops in this area. So the traffic stops were up, and we target those areas that you guys call and make complaints on. The way we target it is we'll set, you'll see the rumble strips that go out periodically from the traffic engineer, or we'll put our signs out so that we can get an idea of what speed we're looking at. So a speed may seem excessive to you, but when we come out and look at it, it may not be as excessive as you think. So we'll share the data with you. So if there's an issue with your particular road, and you think people are going up and down the road at I-Race, then call Park of Work. I do have a traffic enforcement department that goes around, and it's also signs we can get the data from the court a little bit, and then we can target specific kinds of the day that we want to come out and do traffic enforcement. But then again, we also work with the traffic engineers to look at specifics to the roadway. Is it a design thing? Is it a sign thing? Is it a rumble strip thing? All those things we kind of put into play and see if we can slow things down and keep people moving. But I think overall, as Commissioner corrected, crime in this area for the large populated unincorporated areas is incredibly, incredibly low. Our proximity to Baltimore makes us somewhat appealing to folks. I do see that periodically. We are looking at specific things that help us identify folks that might be here for nefarious activity. But also, when it comes to Elderford Commons, I have had, I'm going to say for six or nine months, a deputy assigned to Elderford Commons full time, so that we can pre-crime before it even happens. But that's not fair to everybody. I can't sustain that, because the Walmarts and the offices of the world have to secure their property, they have to pay their fair share. And if my deputy's there sitting every day, all day, then he's not patrolling up and down 26. He's not going to other stores that are, that are securing their property appropriately. And so that's a short-term thing, just to kind of get an idea if what we're doing is working. As Commissioner talked about the SRO program, it goes incredibly well. It's a very popular program within the schools. If you have children or grandchildren in the school, the schools, the likelihood is that they know the deputy, they know their name. It's just been a wonderful program. It's funded completely by the commissioners, very little safety goes into that. But if you're at Liberty High School, Jessica Snyder's over there. If you're at Century, Demont Harvey's there. And then I've got the middle schools covered down here with John Wealthy and a couple other deputies that are bouncing through the middle and elementary schools, but it works extremely, extremely well. Overall, I just simply think that this area runs extremely well when it comes to crime and crashes and...
School buses.
Yeah, so school buses. So, I think in super years, just before COVID, the superintendent's rule came about putting GPS systems and stop arms on school buses. So I'm not a big camera guy, like I simply don't think putting a speed camera on a road is going to change the behavior. It'll change behavior when you come up to that camera and you know it's there all the time, and then the behavior changes when you go past it. I do support school bus cameras and the stop arm cameras that are there. And I think we have roughly about 300 buses that have the stop arm system on them. They're throughout, every bus has got them. And so we write about, we approve a little over 300, 350 citations a month. We get about 600, we see about 600 citations that come per month, but what happens is, is the school buses, when they make their stop to pick up kids, the bus arm comes out and the red lights go, obviously you're required to stop. If you violate that according to the law, the letter of the law, bus control sends us a photo, a video, and a traffic citation. It comes to my staff that goes through each part of that and makes sure that it is a legitimate violation, that if it's something that doesn't look like, it looks like it's in the city, it's a side road, they're halfway down, or something that we just simply go to the court for and accept, we decline the citation. But if all the citations come through roughly, it ranges from 300 to 400 a month, and that's throughout the county. And that's a lot of people that are blowing through red lights, stop bars, a lot of people. And so our goal there was, when you see a yellow bus that went in depth, you just stop. We don't see it as much as you think on 26. It's generally the side roads, the ridg roads, the Marysville roads, the places where people are just shooting. And that does help us with traffic control and slow people down around the school buses. So we've seen great success with the school buses. With the bus control program, it also gives us real-time GPS location for the buses, it tells us exactly what's going on inside the buses, should there be a panic alarm, and it also gives them two-way communication with us and their dispatchers with the county. So the bus control program works really well. I will be here for the duration, and I'll be here later tonight. You guys are welcome to ask any questions. Do I have time to pick a couple now?
Sure.
If you guys have them, hit me with them. Cool. Okay, I'm...
[laughter]
That's it? Come on, guys. I feel that was easy.
We'll get back to you, trust me. But...
Liz, please come back to the front desk. Liz, please come back to the front desk.
I think the best thing that we can do to keep Carroll County continued to be the place that we all want to be is, see something, say something. I get a lot of emails, texts, or calls about a theft or about something happening, and I said, the first thing I said is, "Did you report it?" Or, "There's a traffic, you know, issue between Johnsville and 26." It's tough, it's difficult. I said, "Well, if you saw something, report it. Let people know." And, you know, that's usually my typical answer, is let us all know so we can continue to make it, you know, the best place. It's not the sheriff's job, responsibility, it is all of our responsibility. I did highlight the drug issue. And the two things I identified to the Governor-elect was, one was the Veterans Home and the Veterans Services that we have here in Carroll County, which are just phenomenal, because it's taken care of a community that has for a long time been disregarded and held off to the side. So I'm very proud of our Citizen Services and our Veterans Advisory Council, which is the community coming together... is the community coming together and taking care of our veterans. The other thing I did share with the governor-elect was the drug issue. And we don't have enough services for the education, for the facilities, for rehabilitation, and then for the continued rehabilitation. Because rehabilitation isn't one time in and one time out and you're already fixed. It's one time in and six, seven, eight, nine times out. And then, you know, with a lot of work, you'll be in a better situation. We don't have those facilities here in Carroll County or in the state. So I'm talking to him, I said, well, we have a couple of facilities down here in District Five. One's called the RSS, it's off of Buttercup, and then the Shoemaker House, which is in the Springfield complex. We need more. We need to expand them more. We need to have better services within them. So I'm looking to state funds to see how we can do something better. The same thing goes with the education. How can we provide the best education at the earliest level for our kids to understand it's a bad thing to just put something in your mouth? Because it's just a little grain, just a little tiny grain of fentanyl will kill you. That's just incredible. I mean, it's not, you know, a Gumi Bear or something like that. We're talking tiny. And that's, and people are doing it because, I won't say peer pressure or just other reasons, and they pop it in their mouth and then they die. Or they have to get rushed to the hospital. So whatever we can do to continue to build the rapport and relationships with our children, and again, see something, say something, and let's strengthen the programs, one that we already have, but then also find other programs that are necessary. So we're not in a bad position. But it's just, it's just bad stuff. I'm going to stop in one second. I just wanted, I have it in front of me. The self-storage facility, in October, it went to the technical review. And it went to the technical review for a five-story, and I'm reading this off, five-story facility, 50 feet high, for 752 units with 25 parking spaces. State Highway said they will not allow ingress egress off of 26. So they have to look at alternate ways of doing it. And a traffic impact study was not required because we're talking only the 25 vehicle parking space. It wouldn't be that many vehicles coming in and out of the facility. When it went to the technical review in October, certain findings were discovered before it's allowed to go to concept. Stormwater management needs concept approval. The current design needs to be reworked. The elevation drawings showing mass height of over 50 feet. It's allowed only to be 50 feet by code. The future right now away extends onto a property. Need to relocate the landscape retaining wall to be outside of the future right away. In other words, we do not want to encroach onto anybody's property. And then recommend providing full render of proposed building, taking land and curvature into consideration. The reason I'm sharing that with you is I'm standing here saying, I'm not in favor of a storage facility here in Carroll County. But in the same respect, I won't say I'm not opposed to it, I believe in property owner rights, but I also believe in community, you know, rights as well. And there's got to be a balance. That's why it took three years to define the Beatty property. That's why it took quite some time to define the Zable property, was getting your input and changing what we were going to do to what we are now doing with both Zable and Beatty property in lowering the densities of both those properties. But it took your input to do that. It's the same thing with this. It's continuing to get your input, what makes best sense? It's, I think, one and a half acres or whatever, I can't remember the size, that the property owner wants to sell. It's under contract with a company out of Baltimore County, and they're looking at a solution to build this facility. Does that make the most sense? Personally, I don't believe it does. So then the question is, what does make the most sense? Getting your input, and the answer is nothing is typically not the right answer, okay? So we got to come up with some ideas to share. But that is, I know, a hot topic for a lot of folks. And I have a breakout here of what happened at the TRC, the technical review, and the steps forward. Okay. I apologize, it went over about seven minutes. This is your time. What's on your mind? Yes, sir?
My name is Ed Gottlieb. My wife and I are residents of Carroll County. This is a late question, but is property currently some commercial?
Yeah.
And I'm using the term commercial because I know all the terminology was changed a year to something.
Right. Right. Yeah, so I appreciate, and I'll try to repeat some of the questions as well. The property that we're looking at for the storage facility, is it zoned commercial? Yes, it is. It has been zoned commercial since 1960s or early 70s, yeah, mid 60s, 64, I think it was, zoned commercial. When we went through over the last two years of zoning, what we were asking for are any of the properties in Carroll County not zoned appropriately? Should the property owner come in and say, you know, my area is zoned residential, but really it should be zoned commercial or vice versa? And then it would go through Planning and Zoning Commission, they would weigh in with their recommendations, it would come to the Board of County Commissioners to make a final decision. And I'll tell you, we didn't rubber stamp any of them because we went, you know, away from the planning and zoning and took on the responsibility. Nobody came to us with this property saying that this property is not zoned, the property owner, it's their rights to say that the property is not zoned correctly. It was zoned in 1960, I think it's 64, commercial, and it stays commercial. So it is, because I get a lot of that, why are we putting this in a residential area? It's a residential, it's a commercial property that butts up against a residential property. That's what's happening. And, yeah, go ahead.
If we're allowing commercial property that abuts a residential property, does that make the next residential property eligible for commercial too?
Right. So, yeah, I know. Where's it stopped?
You can go through the whole development.
Correct.
Everybody lives next to each other. You can end up with all commercial.
So, yeah, and the question is, you know, where does it stop? When do we stop looking at the encroachment of commercial? Keep going, commercial, commercial. The, on 20, let's focus on 26. The properties on 26, there have been some residential properties, especially west of 32, that are residential, and they came to us and said, you know, it's not residential, it is commercial, because it's on 26. And we decided, yes, you're right, it is commercial. There's kind of lines in the sand where, you know, you're going to find, if it's not a natural border, you're going to find zoning where you will have residential, and it can be low density, high density, whatever residential, and it'll butt up against commercial or industrial. I mean, that's, or conservation or agriculture. I mean, that's, if you look at the map of Carroll County, especially here in the Freedom District, that's what you're going to see. I understand where does it stop, but it's the property owner's responsibility and right to come to us and say, you know, we are not zoned appropriately, and we want you to look at our property to be rezoned into something else. But this property, nobody's ever said that, it was zoned commercial, and nobody is saying it should not be zoned commercial. The property owner's not saying it shouldn't be zoned commercial. He's trying to sell it as commercial. So, no, but I definitely understand. Yes, sir?
You mentioned that Georgetown Boulevard and London Town.
Yeah.
The hairpin turn. Has the county actually got plans to transform that into a circle? Because I thought that was a suggestion related to the Beatty property being under contract. They wanted to extend Georgetown right into the farm. So that essentially, if that whole idea is scrapped, or is the county going to build a circle with intent for one day connected onto the Beatty property?
Right. So the question has to do with Georgetown, London Town, making that into a circle or changing the hairpin turn into just a safer turn from Georgetown to London Town. The intent is to keep it as a circle, is to maintain the development of a circle, and then at one day, expand it into the Beatty property with one spur going that way. Right away, it's not going to happen right away, obviously, but, yeah, it is just a very dangerous, and we all know that, very dangerous turn where a circle would take away a lot of the danger out of that. So, yeah, the intent is to create a circle. Yes, ma'am?
I want to add something to Mr. Gottlieb's statement. Three years ago, that property, I want to restore its facilities plan, which for more than three years, it was summer of 2019. Mr. Perone, owner of that property, petitioned several people in Carroll Highlands subdivision because there's one plot at the end next to the first house, as you come in to look at the road, that was still part of the Carroll Highlands residential subdivision. And he needed the permission of all of us, all of the people along Carroll Highlands, to change the zoning. My question is, why during COVID, all of a sudden was this zoning changed to C2? When none of us were informed, there was no sign to notify that there was multiple hearing, it just feels to the residents like this was slipped in in an illegitimate way.
Okay.
I personally, when you talk about the feeling of the community, I personally went through the community and got petitions signed, and there wasn't one person who said to me, this is a great, this is a great plot, let's let it go through.
Right.
And I had to add what you think Perone did. He came around to us, he offered us money, $1,000 to sign that. And it just seems weird that, you know, 7-Eleven, they go in.
Right.
We all said no to that money and signing that, but now they can do what they want to it.
Okay. Okay. I got it. And, no, no, I got it, I want to repeat it as well. So you're referring to the property owner, Nick Perone, who is selling that property as commercial to build the storage facility. And prior to doing this, you're saying three or four years ago, that he petitioned the community to take an adjacent part or adjacent parcel and get it from residential to commercial, is what, to expand, I guess, that larger parcel. I don't remember that ever happening. In three years, and I will go back and I'm going to make sure Chris does as well, I don't remember that parcel coming in front of us to be rezoned. And it would have to. It would have to go to the Board of County Commissioners, you know, on the dice, in open meetings, typically through planning and zoning, and then with their recommendation. And I don't recall that happened now. I'm not saying it didn't. And I'm going to have, you know, my guys check it. Robert is reaching out now, as I could see, and Chris is as well, but.
You have several residents here.
No, I.
You have the letter that, the letter that the party is calling for, for us money.
Yeah, so, so the intent, so the intent of that happening, I'm not doubting you at all. The intent of that happening from Mr. Perone or anyone else may have been there. The end result is what I'm looking at. And the end result is, did that property ever, like you said, go from residential to commercial to expand the parcel to allow what's happening? I don't remember that part of it. So, and that's the part that's, you know, my responsibility, but I'm going to find out. And we're checking that. Yeah?
I'm Nancy Lynch, this is my husband Joe, and we are the immediately adjacent property owners to this site. And we lived there 37 years, and we all got the same ring. I have tried to talk to people at the county, I met with Linda Osborne, I showed her the documents, it was a legal document. He went around and said, the first eight people who will sign this, I'll give $1,000 to, and that we can't change this property to commercial without it. And we were able to stop people from doing it, he didn't get enough people. So that was the last we heard of it.
Okay.
We thought, that's why we think we had some say. But I've asked several people at the county level, and no one can tell me when it changed. I've looked through old commissioner meetings.
Right.
And I think it goes back to sometime last year where there was a blanket change to a lot of properties on map 74. And ours.
Right, right. No, that part I remember. Everything you're saying, I remember.
It magically happened.
See, I don't, and I'm going to find out if it did or not. I don't think that that parcel that we're talking about ever changed from residential to commercial. I don't remember.
Well, maybe it was a C2 to a C3 or.
I'm going to find out. Before, you know, we're done today.
But we brought all the paperwork to Linda Eisenberg.
Yeah.
And she said, this is a legal matter.
And she said she referred it to the legal department.
Right, okay.
And then.
Well, because what it sounds like is that if he didn't get the signatures, it would have died on the vine, and nothing would have changed. You're saying things did change.
Yeah.
And, right, and that's where, I'm going to find out. Okay. Now, how Mr. Perone did what he did by incentivizing you, that's his issues, you know. I don't want to, I don't want to deal with that, you know, and I think I've shared with you, I've known Mr. Perone for quite some time. But, you know, when I talk to him, you know, I'm always saying, hey, we're talking as Nick and Ed or as Commissioner and Mr. Perone, because he owns a couple of properties down in our area. But I'm going to find out, because I don't recall making that change. And Ms. Fawcett works for Linda, and she's actually going to be, or she is, the liaison for us into this area, because we need somebody dedicated in this area. So, so that's why they're talking. But, yes, sir?
My name is Tom Campbell. I've lived in Carroll County since 1972. Great place, love it. Eldersburg.
Me too.
I just have one question, which Jermaine did a purpose of his meeting, I do not know. But it seems like if there's ever going to be a power failure in the Western Hemisphere, it's always in Bonnie Bray. I mean, the last 25 years, we've had none of the power failure. Before that, we had nothing in Carroll County. And I was talking to one of the workers a few years ago, and he says, well, they didn't know where to hook it in. I said, great, you can drive from Bonnie Bray out anywhere else, and it looks like pretty all lit up in July. Bonnie Bray's this black hole in the mountain. You can see it. And I was wondering, I don't know if it's having power in this, but the county, not the county, but the power company never cared too much. Now, I know it's my fault, usually we go to Virginia, it's warmer down there. But the last time it happened, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, over Christmas holiday.
Right.
And the inside of a refrigerator, it was 41 degrees, and it was 48 degrees in my living room.
Wow.
And I go up to the car and sit in the driveway just to get it warm. And that was going to cost me a lot of thousands of dollars to put in a full house generator, because it's not dependable anymore. And it's just seemed to be Bonnie Bray. It's a little conflag on people right there on Bonnie Bray Road, Bonnie go away.
Right.
You drive, if you find out where the boundary is, it's code in different directions. And where you see the light, that's Carroll Town. Bonnie Bray's got any of those free homes, but.
No, I got you. If you haven't heard, what we're talking about is power outages on Bonnie Bray and not in other areas within Eldersburg. and not in other areas within Eldersburg or within this area. It does remind me when I commanded, I commanded Fort Meade, I was the installation commander, and surrounding areas were having power outages, and my house was always lit. And people were like saying, what the hell over? You know, I was like, it's not my fault. It's BGE. It's, it's the private company. But we'll find out. Doug Brown's going to get your information, and we'll reach out to BGE and find out. It is a private matter. But these are issues, if you're not, if you get frustrated reaching out to BGE or others, we have relationships with them, and then we'll, we'll follow up. And that's exactly what Doug's going to be doing, is following up to figure out what's going on with that. But, one second, ma'am. Go ahead.
So I live on Locust Lane, which is downstream from Carroll Highlands. We have a well-known water situation on Locust Lane and Oak Hill Drive. The county did a year and a half geographical survey of our neighborhood and described all of the issues of stormwater management and proposed a solution. And they don't have a million dollars to do it. So they're not doing anything to solve the issue of all the water from Locust Lane going through my backyard. So I spent $7,000 to remediate the stream in my backyard, literally in my yard. My neighbor said, who's not here, I don't think, spent $30,000 to remediate the stream that was encroaching within six feet of her property's foundation.
Yeah.
Kelly cannot help her, the state cannot help her. So it's a, it's a situation. It's a concern that my property value, if that building up on the top of the hill is damaged. I believe my property value will be diminished by the presence of a 50-foot building at the top of the hill. It will diminish the value of the homes that are adjacent to it in any surrounding area. No doubt about it. You want a solution? I came up with a solution, something that is muted in South Carroll. And that is a medical specialty office building, that could be several stories high, not five, that could serve the residents of South Carroll. I help out with caring Carroll, and all I do twice a week is drive people to Westminster, see cardiologists, pulmonologists, dermatologists, oncologists. That location is perfect for that. We would attract physicians from Owens Mills, Elephant City, Baltimore County. It's a perfect, something to pitch to the landowner as a potential solution.
Okay.
As a potential idea.
Okay.
That serves the people of South Carroll. And I just wanted to present that idea to you. I know you're working with him.
Yep.
And I know parking is an issue, so.
Yeah.
I'm 100% sure how that can be solved, but I came up with that idea, and I wanted to.
Okay. Absolutely. No, I got it. So, no, I appreciate.
We don't have any primary care doctors. Can you try to get two primary care doctors?
I got it. Let me, I will, I will, you know, approach them with that. Sure, absolutely. The first issue, though, the water issue. Hey, Chris, I need you. Talking about water issues encroaching on personal properties on Locust.
Locust and Oak Hill.
And Oak Hill. Are you familiar?
Somewhat, yes.
I know you've got a big voice, but use that.
Yes, so I believe it was a couple of years ago that our Debbie Butler, who lives here with you in the area, looked at that area. She came to my office because my office is responsible for stormwater management. She, DPW addresses drainage, we address the management of the water. So we look at the neighborhood. Unfortunately, there's no public property available, because what needs to happen is we need to capture that water and like, and handle it to burn and release it slowly to eliminate flooding issues, if that makes sense, right? So there's no public property anywhere in that neighborhood where we could put that type of stormwater facility. And talking with Debbie, the costs associated with purchasing property, redoing the drainage and so on, we were talking billions of dollars, and it was just not something that, that she, that we were from a DPW perspective as a public works project for the commissioners to consider. So it's certainly something that, that is on my radar as, from a stormwater management perspective, that it would, we would love to do a project there. But until there's space, until a house that's conveniently located comes up for sale, that can be purchased and a stormwater facility put there, that sort of thing, that's really the only solution I can come up with from a stormwater perspective.
Well, I had plans of the potential solution. I was given them at a meeting. And, you know, other than water rights as far as where streams are and it would have to be contained, I didn't remember any personal property that needed to be purchased. The other thing that I brought to light was the cause of the problem was Carroll County over paving Locust Lane multiple times rather than digging it down and repaving a road and maintaining the crown.
Does Doug have that answer?
Carroll County roads paved over in 32 years. I've lived there twice. The crown is completely destroyed. The water no longer goes towards the drainage. It goes toward my side of the street.
You hear what she's saying, right?
So there is the root of the problem. The root is caused by Carroll County, the way they manage their infrastructure in the least expensive way possible.
So, as I said, Department of Public Works addresses drainage issues and roadway improvements and so on. So, and I think that's, that was the impetus for Debbie Butler to look into it and try and come up with solutions and so on. But again, it's one of those things where I think it was cost prohibitive for the county to explore further. We haven't forgotten about it. It's something that, from my perspective, I continue to look at. And if I come up with a good solution, any way that I can address multiple issues with addressing the quantity and quality of the stormwater, which is my responsibility, and couple that with addressing flooding and drainage issues, we do so whenever we can. So it's definitely something that's on my radar, but it's something that is going to cost significant dollars to address.
The same problem that we're having around the drive, the double pavement. People on the even side of the street are flooded out. They spend, a lot of them aren't here this morning, they'll be here tonight. And they spend thousands of dollars to curb the county's water.
Yeah. So we have mechanisms in place to report those types of flooding issues to DPW. It's called CCLEAK REPORT. So if you go onto the county website, there's a place that you can put in all that information. Again, I think Commissioner Rothstein said, if you see it, speak up about it. So convey that information to DPW, and then that works itself.
People don't realize, when they got double paved on with the, and all the water ran down into their driveways and into their paths.
I have not heard about that property, about panorama. I mean, and now I have. So now we're going to, we're going to check into it. There's a priority list that we have of roads in the county. There's a priority list of roads here in the Freedom District. Some are just in due time. They're going to get repaved. They're going to get, you know, kept up. Others have needed immediate action to them. I didn't know this. So getting.
Well, the problem is, there's going to be people that either died or moved out. New people came in, it was double the problem.
Yes, but letting them know, go online, CCLEAK, I mean, and report it, it will get addressed. Or just send me a note, and it will get addressed. Because typically, when people send me a note, yes, ma'am, when people send me a note, the typical action I have is, thanks for your response, give me a little bit, check into this. I reach out to the appropriate staff, CC Roberta, because if I miss a staff or somebody's not there, and then they come back to me, or they, they'll come back to me and say, here's the information. Do you want me to address it to the community member or not? And then we, you know, I'll say yes or no. But it's very responsive, you know. I just didn't know about this, so. But let whoever it is having an issue, let me know, and I will follow up. So. Just give me one second. Yes, ma'am.
I think part of the issue here is communication, not always knowing where to go. I'm going to be honest, I'm not familiar with county websites.
Right.
We didn't have a lot of issues through the permit process, so I know things are not laid out clearly. So maybe we should work on getting this information out and available to the public.
Yeah. Right. Right.
What this is about. So if there was a way that we could, we could go into the county website.
Yep.
You have a storm drainage issue problem, this is.
Yep. No, I agree. And no matter how much we establish better communications on websites, make it easier, above the fold, all these ideas, it's always going to be a challenge. You know, because we're going to miss. So, so take it as a continuing, evolving solution. I got it. You know, my phone number and email should be always available to you to either text or email, and those who have know that I'm pretty responsive, or at least I really try to be. I understand the frustration. The newsletter that I provide gives, I hope, a lot of information. Hope is, as I say, not a course of action, but I say hope because I don't get a lot of feedback from it. So if you provide me feedback, then I can say, okay, I'm going to continue to elaborate on this, or this stuff really doesn't matter, and I will make it more valuable content for you. These town halls are another way. Social media is another way, but also is the attitude of hiding behind keyboards, and you never know what's going to come out. So I'm reluctant on the Facebook, you know, because I do not respond. What I typically do on Facebook is I will say, reach out to me, here's my number, here's my email for me to respond. You're going to.
I just want to give a quick update on CCLEAK REPORT.
Okay.
So make it real easy. If you have anything drainage related, a pothole, dead deer out on the road, you can go right to Carroll County homepage, scroll all the way down to the bottom right-hand side, and you will see CCLEAK REPORT.
Headless people and houses.
Look on that, and that's what I'm explaining what CCLEAK REPORT is. It allows you as a customer to sign up for a CCLEAK REPORT account. You can download it and have it on your phone. If you have an issue, while you see something while you're out walking through your neighborhood, if you have a question, you're not quite sure, you can GO, pick where you're at. You can upload a picture to that app. That app comes to the Department of Public Works, then we route those. If it's a road issue, we can take care of it, but the nice thing is, you as our customer, you get automatic feedback. So once you enter your email and your mobile, you'll be able to track that particular issue. And guess what? If it's something that doesn't belong in, if you do, we'll route it to the right place before we close the case. So again, very easy, bottom right-hand corner, CCLEAK REPORT. For those of you who can't, or don't have the means to do it electronically, no big deal. Dial the main number with the county, ask for Public Works, and in Public Works, they'll put you to us, and we can enter that manually if you need. So we're glad to help you out. Sorry you're having problems getting.
I apologize. One second. Yes, ma'am.
I have two things.
Okay.
Kathy Woremecker, I live right here on Menonah Road.
Okay.
I had a question because of Nell's Acres, the site right there on 26th, the old white house came down. And I would have to, the developments and process, and just in the lower portion from 26th, well, going down to Marriottville Road, up just a little bit above Bennett and Oklahoma, over to 32. We have over 1,000 homes that are going up. Half of them are townhomes. Some of them, or half of them, are over 55 or adult communities.
Are you, so, okay, are you talking everything? You're talking Nell's Acres, Zabel, Beatty? Everything. Okay. Oh, got it, got it. Okay. Got it. Got it. Okay. Right, right. Okay, right.
But some of them are up over 133.
Correct.
133.
Correct.
Where are the, how's the infrastructure handling of this? How are the schools going to handle the single-family or townhomes?
Right, right.
My other question is, when are we going to get somebody in this county besides Comcast or cable and internet?
Okay, let me answer the first one. The second one is whole lot. Pain, yes. So the first one. We have, if you look at the, the big picture of the Freedom area, you see a lot of growth that is planned. All of the growth that is planned goes through a process, whether it's residential or commercial. And we've shown this with the technical review, with concept plans, with planning and zoning. As it goes through the process, there's checklists that it must meet before it goes to the next step. Infrastructure, schools, utilities, fire, water, sewage, does it meet those criteria? If it meets those criteria, go to the next step. If it doesn't meet those criteria, how will things change? Or, you know, so it does meet that criteria, or will it stop? All of the developments you're talking about are going through that right now. Things, residents will not be built. Homes will not be built unless it meets those criteria. One of the issues that comes up often are schools. So last year, and it's happened years before, a community redistricting committee stood up with oversight from CCPS, from the schools, and the Board of Education also input. I was fortunate also to be a part of that, to see what the schools look like, especially down here in the southern part of Carroll County. It was determined that the schools are not overcrowded in Carroll County. Not here, but in Carroll County. So getting funding from the state to build more schools or to do certain actions, we will not be able to get because the state looks at Carroll County as one jurisdiction. So that's why we're looking at this redistricting. Does it make sense to move people from one place to another? Right now, the answer is no. That was the decision made, you know, probably in the summer sometime, I think it was. And said, no, but don't stop looking at the problem. Because if we say no and put it on the shelf, we're going to be right back where we were, you know, years ago. So, no, not this time. Keep looking at the problem. Another question comes up about impact fees. Why not have the developers that are developing all this residence provide funds or dollars, they're called impact fees, for developing to build schools? Impact fees are designed for, here for parks and schools. Going back to my original comment, schools are not needed here in Carroll County because in the totality of Carroll County, there's enough schools to take care of our community, to take care of our student population. So therefore, impact fees right now are at zero. If we were to put impact fees in place and take dollars from developers, we would have to use those dollars in a reasonable amount of time, which is defined at about six years, or we basically give it back. And there's no defined, we don't see in six years the need for additional schools. We see the need for potential redistricting because of schools up in the north not having, their capacity not being filled. So that's part of the issue. The infrastructure, roads, fire EMS. We're professionalizing our fire EMS. We're meeting demands of fire EMS. That's going to, that is a huge haul, and that's, I'm very proud that we're going there. I think it was in 2018, legislation from the state allowed us to get there. Now it's, okay, now that we are getting there, how are we going to fund it, you know, to meet? Now it's, okay, now that we are getting there, how are we gonna fund it, you know, to meet the demands? And we're doing that as well. So it's not one thing or the other. It really, like you said, we have all this development happening. What about all of the issues? The facilities, the, the infrastructure, the demands, when these things are being built? How is that all working together? That's what the Planning and Zoning Commission does. They look at these properties, and they work with our staff, and they say, does this make sense? Does it go to the next step? And nothing will be built unless the facilities and infrastructure allows for things to be built. That's, that's the, the goal that we're trying to meet. It's difficult because this, you know, Freedom District was, and is, was considered a designated growth area. I don't hold a lot of weight into that because Carroll County's Carroll County. You have municipalities, you know, the eight of them, they're designated growth areas. And then this big, large area. I'm not as defined, you know, here, like, just because it's within this boundary that it's designated growth, and right outside the boundary is not. But it is a designated growth area, and there are guidelines that were provided in 2018 that we're working through. A master plan is being designed to be put in place in 20, I think, 2024, 26. And we, you know, brought in people to look at that as well for planning. We have Land Resource Management, DPW, and our Economic Developer, all working together. What makes sense. We have a long ways to go, and getting community input. So getting folks from the community to be a part of that team as well, to say, this is what makes sense or not. Long-winded answer, I know. Wasn't sure where you were going because you started with, with Nell's Acres, but then you, then I saw you were going all across.
Where I started.
Right. And, and just like I do. You start east to west or south to north, and that's exactly what you did. So I understand. But that's, that's where we're at now. We look at each parcel from the property owner, having their rights to do or not do what he or she wants, go through planning and zoning, and then take it to the next step. So. Kristen.
So as someone with kids in the schools in South Carroll, I hear what you're saying, that it's not overcapacity. But I also feel like we can't forget that an election was coming up when they made that decision because no one wanted their kids redistricted. And the BOE decided to push it down the road. I feel like that could be a big reason. If you have kids that went to Carroll Town, you know it's very full. If you have kids at Freedom, you know it's overcapacity. Also, I have a kid at Liberty. That school's falling apart. There are ceiling tiles falling all the time. Over winter break, a pipe burst killed a lot of the animals that were in the science research lab. Yeah, no one knows about that, right? And that wasn't in the news. A lot of the animals died. Two animals out of the whole class of research animals survived. So these kids lost their education, those animals lost their lives. The school is not up to par. If, if we have these brand-new schools in the northern part of the county, couldn't these impact fees be used, even if it's not for new construction, to at least make sure my kids not go into a dump?
Okay. A lot put into that, and I don't disagree with a lot of what you said. I didn't know anything about the animals. I don't know if you did or not. So that's pretty sad.
And it also flooded the art room underneath the science classroom.
Okay.
But then the kids went to that art class once it was flooded for a few days before they were relocated.
Okay. So...
I don't think people know what's happening in our schools.
Okay, the, the first, the first comment you made regarding election times, I, I don't know. It didn't affect me in any of my decision-making. I, I, I don't know if it affected others. I don't think it did during the election time. I think the process that was taking place was well over a year, you know, with the community. And the results, I thought, I sat in...
The recommendations of the committee.
Right. But, but I don't think anything had to do with elections. That, that's me.
I can't say that, but that's my gut feeling.
Okay. And I'm telling you what mine is. Or at least it didn't affect me. As far as looking harder at the schools, I, I got you, sir, one second. Looking farther or further at the schools and the capital projects necessary at the schools, I understand. And I will take all of those and, you know, ensure, I mean, really, the, the people I talk to is the superintendent, and I've shared this with you, is, is the superintendent and the Board of Education. And I will share everything you just said with the superintendent and the Board of Education because it affects this community. I knew nothing about that. Now, whether I would have or not is regardless, but just to let them know now...
And I mean, a further question is, why isn't the community aware of something like that?
I don't know.
I know it's not your fault, but that's, that's another question.
I'm not looking at fault.
Why don't we know what's happening in the schools?
I understand. I, I don't know, but I'm gonna, I'll ask.
I appreciate it. I mean, I, I'm raising this as a concern. I, I'm not, I know this isn't your jurisdiction.
No, I, I understand.
But also, with the blueprint coming up, couldn't the impact fees be used for that? Because we're talking like 13 million dollars.
We'll talk about blueprint in a second. Let me...
Okay.
Get, get a question or two, and I can go back to that.
My name is Devin Staples. I have two kids, one six and one nine, in Freedom Elementary right now. And I'm very concerned about the overcrowding in South Carroll schools. I sent the commissioner an email, and he invited me to come to this meeting.
Yeah, I didn't, you sent it, I sent you something, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
But in my email, I am challenging the commissioner, not only Ed, but the rest of them, to come up with a solution. We keep talking about these impact fees, but he's already explained eloquently how we can't really use those in Southern Carroll County. We still have a problem with our overcrowded schools in South Carroll. And the real solution that I think everybody is kicking down the road is we're just gonna redistrict. Well, four years ago, I moved to Carroll County so my kids could go to that school. I don't want my kids going to Central Carroll or someplace else and having to go. Now, I'm sure I'm allowed to provide transportation to any school that I want in this county, but that's not why I pay my county taxes. I wanna have my kids go to the school in my neighborhood, and I don't think redistricting is a valid answer to the problem in overcrowding in South Carroll schools. Well, I'm challenging Ed Rossby and the rest of the county commissioners to figure it out. If it isn't impact fees, if we're raising taxes, what is it? You guys are the ones who have to come up with a solution. I don't know how the system works. You guys do. And I think something needs to be done.
Okay.
To not kick the can down the road further.
Nope, I got you.
And eventually, the board of exes would say, we're gonna redistricting, and you can't do a thing about it.
Okay.
So I'm a little ticked.
Okay. So first off, I've never been called eloquent, and I think the sheriff can attest to that. So I don't speak eloquently. But the solution, whether we like it or not, is where do, you know, you got revenue, you got expenses. Where does the revenue come from? In order to build another school, we need state funds to help build that school, and then put our revenue in addition to state funds. The state will not fund additional capital projects to build a school because they look at Carroll County in its totality on whether or not it has adequate space for students in Carroll County. They're not looking at South Carroll and North Carroll and Middle Carroll. They're looking at Carroll County. So then, we look at potential impact fees. Potential impact fees designed, again, parks and schools. So let's stick with the, the school piece of it. If the state says, we're not gonna give you funds, then the impact fees are not gonna be anywhere near enough dollars to build another school. So the expectation of another school being built here should not even be considered at this point. The growth that's happening here, we should be very guarded. Whoever brought up, was it, yeah, you brought up. We should be very guarded on the growth, on how things are being grown, and will it overcrowd the schools any further than what is happening now? So the solution is looking at redistricting. Now, a lot of folks don't like, you know, using the term redistricting. A lot of folks don't like using the term taxes, okay? But that's the reality. So working together on what potential redistricting may take place, or could take place to meet the demands of our county, should be looked at. If the answer is no, the answer is no. But you don't take it off the table before you even take the opportunity to look at it. Which goes into, and I'm gonna segue right into this. The joint meeting we had with the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Education, because it was brought up blueprint, there are unfunded requirements that are coming to us from the blue, from the blueprint, from the state, saying, you will do. There are requirements from the Board of Education, Carroll County School System, and Board of Education saying, we've done all of this, but now we're basically at wit's end because we're not able to retain the teachers. We're not able to bring teachers, not just retain, but onboard teachers because they're going other places. We need ongoing funds to help us meet the, the demands that our kids deserve. That's total, that's 13.8 million or something like that. So it's basically six and a half million over what we were planning on looking at. So that's why when I turned to my Director of Management and Budget, I said, what would it take in revenue to get us to that? It would be raising taxes. I said, okay. So I said, how much in raising taxes would it be? And there's two, there's three taxes that we deal with, but there's two I'm gonna focus on. There's property, income, and recrodation. Recrodation is house buying and selling. Not, let's not talk about that small amount. Let's talk about property and income, the two largest, property being the largest. How much of property tax would it take? And how much of income tax would it take to get us to a point where we can fund the schools? And, and we're just talking schools. We haven't even touched fire EMS or other ongoing requirements that are building, you know, here in the county. And he, and he shared, he being Mr. Zaleski, shared with us those numbers. The intent was not to say, we're raising taxes to meet the demands. My next line was, I'm doing this so everybody knows these are the numbers and we're aware of as we're walking through the budget. It's gonna be difficult. So if you're looking at, you know, my commitment in change, that's my commitment in change, is looking at not necessarily what expenses to cut, but what it's, what revenue to bring onboard. And if impact fees are not an answer, and state funds are not an answer, then taxes may be a solution. So that's where we're at. I mean, you're, you're, you're asking me to come up with something, that's an idea.
I'm on board with that.
Yes, sir.
You say, wait, where did my whole issue? I, well, I saw him live on Monroe right off of Bennett. The last six years, I've seen hundreds of houses, commercial development, everything in this area built. And I was surprised to find out you weren't collecting impact fees. Then I heard your issues about impact fees, and, and I went and did a little research on the subject. Right? And there are counties collecting substantial impact fees, and maybe they have more residential or school rather than home. There are also counties that have problems similar to us, St. Mary's being one of them, where they could not line up impact fees with their infrastructure. In 2021, they went back to the state legislature and asked them to rescind their ability to collect impact fees and replace it with a building excise tax. And there's a number of counties that do have building excise taxes. Those taxes are collected on any residential, commercial, whatever. You pretty much set whatever you want. You can set your rates different for different things, and that's what the bill says. Here's the bill.
Right.
The bill authorized St. Mary's County to impose a building excise tax on any building construction in the county. The county commissioners may impose different tax rates on different types of building constructions. Revenues from the taxes must be deposited in the county's general funds and may be used for any lawful purpose. So you can take these fees, pay for that 95% of the budget we were talking about, and take the freedom money and pay in for the school.
Right.
For the water, or whatever you wanted. Okay? The county existing authority imposed development impact fees as repeal. The bill takes effect July 1st, 2023.
Yep.
My understanding, it was passed unanimously by the Senate and the House.
Right.
So I assume it's become law.
Yeah, it has. And that's, what, what that's called is enabling legislation. When a county goes to the state and says, I want this done for my county.
Have we went to the state?
The state will say yes. I will take another look at that, and I know we had some discussions on excise taxes. I'll talk more about it. I, I'm not nearly as informed on it as I probably need to be right now, but I will take a look. And, and that's fair.
Was Hassville 520?
Right. No, I, I got, I...
A lot of additional expenditures are going.
I'll find that, that's easy. And, you know, I will, I'll talk to the, you know, my colleagues. Yeah.
Are there any resources? There are, are there any resources?
There are. And I, I will...
You're willing to...
Yep, I am.
Somebody that's willing to time and effort any kids?
I, I'm, I am willing, and I will take a look. I appreciate it. Uh, wait, hold on. Yes, sir. Trying to be a little fair.
My name is Stilkeand, Dr. White, and I'm, and thank you for the opportunity to meet with you. We live on Pooter Road, which is adjacent to one of the several so-called decommissioned trails in Liberty Reservoir. And we're here to bring to your attention a couple of issues. Moon is gonna discuss an idea that we think can actually raise, actually cut, cut expenditures to Carroll County, and, and it would be a win-win situation. She'll discuss that in more detail. The issue I wanna raise is the problem we're having with invasive species that are coming from the reservoir because it's no longer being maintained because it's a decommissioned status. And it's invading adjacent property, including my own. And I'm talking about Japanese still grass, which right now on your properties, if you notice, large patches of brown grass that has died. That's Japanese still grass most likely. It's an annual, but before it dies, it releases thousands of seeds so that in spring, we'll have a larger patch. It's very hard to control. It's so prolific and so desolate that even deer won't eat it. In fact, nothing eats it. It's taking over large sections of the reservoir. It's killing the understory.
Okay.
And in addition to the oil bittersweet, which is an aggressive vine that's bringing down the trees in the reservoir, several that have fallen on my property. You're seeing large areas within the reservoir that are adjacent to these decommissioned trails that are being eroded away. And as a result, additional sediment is entering the Liberty Reservoir, Liberty Lake. And I think, or we think, that it's a potential danger to our water supply. So this is not hyperbole.
Right.
I mean, we're, we're very concerned about it. And we were, we just wanted to bring this, bring this to your attention. Now, we do have some possible ways to address this problem. The problem of invasive plants, believe me, is a significant issue. You're all gonna be able to deal with it, if not already at some point, as property owners. One is to remove the decommissioned designation for the impacted trails and adjacent areas in Liberty Reservoir. And as a result, Baltimore DPW would be required to maintain the trails again, as they used to do, before the decommission status, including the removal of invasive plants and the re-establishment of native vegetation. Imagine hiking a trail and coming across... Imagine hiking a trail and coming across what was once an area that was prolific in wildflowers and beautiful vegetation, and that all there is now is just vacant area. Nothing is there, no trees, no grass, no undersort, okay? Allow volunteers to cut oil bittersweet vines that are along the decommissioned trails so that the trees won't be dragged down and fall on adjacent properties. This is a serious problem. It impacts Carroll County and the metropolitan area. It's impacting our water supply in Liberty Lake. Carroll County needs to be more aggressive in dealing with this issue, the issue of invasive species, because it's not only affecting Liberty Reservoir, it's affecting everywhere. Go to Palm Springs Park, you're gonna see it there too. Funds should be allocated and research is needed to assess the severity and geographic extent of this problem. And then finally, form and empower partnerships with volunteer organizations to allow them to assist Baltimore DPW in maintaining decommissioned trails in their surrounding environment.
Right.
This is an issue that we feel very, very strongly about. And we don't want to wait five or ten years for a study to come out and say, "Hey, you can't drink water now because the additional sediment load that's caused by the erosion of soil within Liberty Reservoir is killing the marine grasses and the biotic life in Liberty Lake."
Okay. So I appreciate it. And the gist is Liberty Reservoir, what are we gonna do about it when it comes to the decommissioned trails and maintain its beauty? And, you know, partnering with Baltimore City, which has the responsibility of Liberty Reservoir along with the environmental police. And environmental police, I think there's four, maybe five, I think, something like that. So they have a very challenging time to maintain their presence on Liberty Reservoir and the trails. That is one of the primary reasons why they decommissioned. You know this, the trails, is because of safety. Because they couldn't maintain their presence, they couldn't keep those trails safe. So the best thing for them to do was decommission them and maintain X amount. I've been a part of this for four years, trying to keep this up, having conversations with the mayor's office, with DPW. It doesn't get very far, and I try and go back and do it again. I've done ride-alongs with the environmental police to look at the trails, look at ideas. And it seems like every time I do, we find folks trespassing on decommissioned trails, not doing the right things. So it makes it that much more difficult because they're spending times on decommissioned trails. It's tough. I mean, because I agree, the number one, the highest priority, and I'm looking back at Jeff Daggett's, for our community in Wreckin' Parks has been trails. And it's been that way for quite some time, is to maintain trails and increase trails across the county. And these are some of the most beautiful. So, yeah. Oh, I agree.
The way the invasive plants are destroying the environment.
Right. So it's two, two things. One is the invasive plants. Doug will deal with that and get with you with his folks. And then Jeff, and I know you know Jeff as well.
You said you don't go that far.
I don't go that far, but he's okay. So-
My wife, Baltimore said-
Yeah, absolutely.
She said, "I need to save the county some money."
I like that.
Yeah.
Okay, so what we think, we believe that the common areas of, like Carroll County, like the lands around the storms containment ponds or the rightways, they should all be planted with native wildflowers to support our pollinators, which all of our farmers and all other gardens need. Everyone around the world needs pollinators for our food. The county spends thousands of dollars cutting grass in these common areas. It's really not necessary. The grass has no true benefit to the environment. Carroll County has an amazing opportunity. You want to establish like a pollinator garden on the parcel that's across from Century High School, on Ron'sdale Road. There's storms containment pond there, over twenty acres in size. We had previously collected milkweed on this parcel to help raise these monarchs. And that was until the county moved everything down to the milkweed farm.
Right.
Now, with your help, we work with Carroll County Government, and now this parcel is designated as a monarch meadow, which we are super excited about. And we also know we're excited about it. So now we save money for the county. The meadow's only cut twice a year. And the remaining vegetation can grow, including the milkweed. So we're appreciative of your efforts to support the monarch butterfly. And what we're suggesting is that we'd like to have a small area there designated as a pollinator garden that can place all the grass, native flowers and plants. And it can only be moved twice a year along with the rest of the vegetation that's there. Community interest in establishing a pollinator garden can be done to help the volunteers. No cost to the county for the purchase of seeds, tillings, planting. And we also want to bring up that this parcel is supposed to go to Century High and Lynn Elementary, which would make this an excellent idea for a living laboratory. So it's within a ground and closed walking distance. And if we could get that started, it could turn this around for other areas in Carroll County. And we have a lot of volunteer organizations that are on board who are helping us. So such as Friends of Liberty Reservoir and Carroll County's American Embassy Partners. Kind of asking for your help and your support to proceed with this small project that could turn into a very great project for both the county and us.
Understood. And this is some great ideas. There are limitations on properties, who owns the property, what are the expectations of the property in the, in the future? So, no, I know that. But there's expectations of that property in the future. But we'll, yeah, I think this was like just a couple of weeks ago. We talked about this, so, go ahead.
Yes.
Yeah.
So my Bureau of Resource Management, who I believe you may have talked to, Janet O'Meara, who's the bureau chief of that bureau. But anyways, I passed that information to your interest in doing that onto her. She's working with Elizabeth Spencer, who is, yes. Good, good. Yes, so we're working, they're working on that along with the county attorney's office to come up with a memorandum of agreement to legally allow, to cover everybody's bases as far as you working on county property and so on. So it is in the works. And we'll be back in contact with you very soon as we work through that.
Do you have any contact information?
Yes, yes, we do.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, again, this was a good idea, and we just want to move forward with it. So, for all the reasons. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Mike Burison-Blyth. I live at sixty-five oh nine Down Round Drive. I want to thank the sheriff for the great job that he's done here.
He's okay.
I'm very upset about the monstrosity that they're talking about putting up between us and Carroll Highlands.
Right.
And the first thing I heard was that they're not allowing traffic to enter onto Liberty Road because the state says it would be too much. Well, that traffic's going to enter on Liberty Road somewhere. It's going to go out on Carroll Highlands, which is already difficult to get out of. We're kind of around it. You're talking about cutting the road through from Carroll Highland to Pound Round. And also between myself and Mr. Bennett, Mr. Lurie. That would change the whole character of our street. Right now, when I bought the house in ninety-three, it was advertised as a dead-end street. We've got a big turnover in neighbors, a lot of young couples have moved in over the last two years with children. They walk their kids up and down the street and scrawls. It's beautiful to see. I made a tour, just makes me feel younger, see it. That will all change. If those two streets are covered in our street-
Right.
It will be, with all the traffic from Marriott's and all the-
Right.
So the idea of those two streets and this monstrosity built there,
Right.
I think it's a terrible idea. And you think Mr. Perone is tired of making a profit on his private? But what's it gonna do to our properties on Carroll Highlands and all that?
Right, right. No, I, yeah.
I appreciate being concerned. We pay taxes, too.
Sure, absolutely. I appreciate it. One, you don't look a day over sixty-five, but that's a different story. But the traffic, the state highway said not to have ingress egress into that facility right in front of it, but you're right. They're gonna have to come from somewhere. And, you know, the idea of expanding ride an hour because it's closest doesn't make a whole lot of sense because it goes right onto the property, which, so they gotta figure this out. That's why they're stuck right now at the technical review, and they gotta figure this out. You're right. Mr. Perone deserves to make money. It's his property, and I have no problem with that. It is a balance between property owner rights and the community. That's what we did with, you know, Zabel. That's what we did with Beatty. That's what we're doing with a lot of other, you know, parcels that are out there. You know, this is one specific use of a parcel, which, you know, has come to light and has bring a lot of frustration to the community. And it's my job to voice that frustration from the community to the developer that wants to purchase this, and I did. And I said, "Let's think about some other ideas." I don't have the, the power to say, "You will not," if it's in accordance with what they're allowed. But what I sure can do is say, "This is something the community's saying." It's the same thing with Zabel getting the petitions and the names and understanding of the commitment of a community saying, "We do not want," or "we want." You know, that's what I, what I try to do. But understood. And I'll continue to work with them and see what we can do. So, absolutely. There absolutely no promises, but I can definitely, you know, do it. Yes.
Have there been any other sites considered for that storage unit? Such as where the storage unit is?
Right.
On Twenty-sixth West of Thirty-two?
Right. Are there any sites that are being considered for other storage facilities? I'll tell you, two years ago, there was not one being thought of being built. And now all of a sudden, there's three or four. It's like, what happened? It's like this storage unit boom, you know, happened. It's not necessarily, if they're looking at other sites, it's, it's the purchaser, it's the buyer, saying, "Here's the list of things I can and cannot do on this commercially zoned piece of property." And he believes the best use of that property is to build a storage facility. It's kind of like building the Seven-Eleven where the Pizza Hut used to be. And they looked at that zoned area, said, "I can build a Seven-Eleven." Well, there's two, you know, gas stations a quarter mile away. Why would you do that? It's being used. And, you know, they, because they can. And it's zoned that way, and they have a car wash, and things are being used, and it's clean. And I was there the other day, just curious, and I haven't gotten any words about it. So what they do is they look at that laundry list. It's, I don't want a storage facility there. I don't believe it's the best place for a storage facility, you know? And they know that, you know? The seller, the buyer, you, you know that. Where I am limited is what I can and cannot do in saying, "You will and will not." What I can do is say, "Here are other options. Here are other opportunities. Here's how we need to work with the community and the neighbors to getting a best product in that area." And make that compromise. But, no, I definitely understand what you're saying. Yes, ma'am.
What do you know about the safety and security for that company who wants to put the storage facility there? Is it open twenty-four hours? Like, how many people work there? And what type of detection do they have for?
Right.
Or has it been secured?
So, yeah, the question is about safety and security of the storage facility itself. The developers have, this is not their first storage facility that they have built. So they do have records of other storage facilities that they have built. They have two onsite full-time employees at any given time. And by all, now, this was just in conversation, but I'm sure I can get the details. In, in complete conversation, they've had no issues with any other, I think they have two or three other facilities. They've had no issues whatsoever with the other facilities. But we can definitely get those numbers. You know, the, the idea that it brings in trash, or it brings in drugs, or it brings in, you know, places where they're gonna store nefarious things, they haven't seen that at all. And, I mean, so what I can do right now is take their word and follow up with, with information, and so can you. And the gentleman did want to be here. He is out of state. But he, he did, you know, want to be here to also answer some of these questions. So next time, and I'll have him maybe address some of these and get it out to everybody as well. So, go ahead first.
And I think we need in this county to someone to like figure out what commercial property did its best where. So it's not a free-for-all, you know?
Right.
Perone says, "This is a great place for a storage facility." We disagree. City Stat Planning Commission, where they have to disclose stormwater and engineering.
Right, right.
We have gathered nine hundred signatures on a petition online-
Right.
Plus over two hundred signatures that we got in person because going around door to door. That's eleven hundred people that say, "Bad idea." Mr. Perone says, "Great idea." Somewhere between bad idea and good idea, someone's gotta say, "Is this the right thing for this community?"
I agree.
But who is the guy? Who is the person?
I, well, I think it's a balance between coming together with the guy who owns the property and the community.
But he wants it.
So, so the idea here is what is best for the piece of property? And it's small, commercial, medium, large, industrial, small, large industrial, ag conservation, and it goes on. We created definitions for each one saying, "This is how to best use this type of property." It doesn't say, "This is how to best use this type of property on the eastern boundaries of Carroll County." You know, we didn't go that specific. We said, "This is what it's zoned, regardless of that, these are best use of properties." This is the best use of industrial properties, this is the best use of, and it's a check, and it fits the block. Can this storage facility be built in this commercially zoned piece of property? And the answer is yes. Now, just going back to that Seven-Eleven. Nobody wanted that Seven-Eleven there. I mean, that Seven-Eleven is doing just fine. And nobody wanted Princess Shopping Center built, where Princess Shopping Center is right now. Princess Shopping Center is doing just fine because it was zoned a certain way. There's still people that think that Princess Shopping Center is an eyesore. And I'm like, I don't know, I go to Los Estacas, it's pretty good. There's, there's, and it's probably, I like the Chinese over there. But, you know, there's a lot of goodness because it was zoned and built a certain way. I think there needs to be a balance between the community, the neighbors, and the developer and the buyer, or the landowner. Exactly what you're doing. The property, it used to be Salerno's on Johnsville. The buyer wanted to build a gas station. The neighbors came out and said, "Are you kidding me?" Or actually, a gas station or a liquor store, I can't remember. And they, same way. And I agree with them. And I went to the developer, I said, "Do you really want to build this here in this type of community? It's surrounded all by residential. It doesn't make sense." And they walked away from that. And now they're building, I think, over fifty-five apartments, I think, is what's gonna be built there. It's the same thing with this. I don't want to say sometimes you win some and you lose some, but I know what you're saying, and I'm gonna do what I can to convey the same message that you're conveying. That eleven hundred, you know, petitioners say, "This doesn't make sense." And I'm gonna work with you in talking to the developer who wants to build this and say, "You gotta go through all of these things, you know? Are you gonna meet these demands? It may be too costly." And we'll see. You know, well, it's, it's more than that. I think it's just work. So, yes.
It's not only changing the collection of the neighborhood. Point number one is the county rezonant or- Point number one is, the county rezoned or whatever a couple of years ago, side point.
Rezoned what, though?
With Mr. Perone, with the...
I don't think anything was rezoned.
Whatever, but the facility was supposed to be 900 units, and the county gave various for parking.
Right.
Limited to 25.
Right.
So that was fine.
Right.
And they changed it to now 750 units, which now, you don't have to do a traffic impact study for the neighborhood.
Right.
We were told, so...
Right, there's no need for a traffic impact study.
Now you're gonna have an entrance, sort of, small Carol Highlands, with possibly tractor trailers to go into this facility.
Not necessary. That's my whole point, is, they need to meet these demands, these requirements, before they can go forward. So, you're making an assumption that they're going to meet them, and I'm making an assumption that the community is going to be strong enough and work with them, saying, "It doesn't make the most sense, let's figure out a better path forward in using that property."
When you look at the complexion of the neighborhood now, the properties there are ruined. That site, there was a residential house, there was a small building, which was a mom-and-pop operation, four-story, but then there was what looked like another two-story.
Right.
White house, which I believe was the plumber who worked out of there. You're not talking about a five-story facility that looks like a prison in our neighborhood.
Oh, no, I understand exactly what you're saying. And, you know, again, if you look down 26, it's the same thing, you got a lot of commercial on 26 that butts up against residential, because along 26, it was determined to be commercial. Now, as far as rezoning, Roberta, did you?
Yep, so, luckily, planning commission's over, so we can get the answer. There was a small sliver of one of the parcels that was, in the back corner of one of the parcels, that was on commercial part of Rissick, and that small sliver in the back corner of the, I believe it's the farthest east parcel, was rezoned during the comprehensive process.
Okay. Yeah, I'll repeat it. Is that what you're asking, to repeat?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They couldn't hear.
Okay.
Well, that's a separate issue.
I'll answer, I'll repeat it, just give me a second.
The plan is to release the HOA restriction on 19 to use this.
Just bear with me one second.
There are two separate ones, one you tell, so everyone can hear.
Are you gonna say it loud enough?
I don't know, I'll try. All right, can you hear me now? All right. So there are two issues, okay? One is the county issue, the zoning issue, and yes, a small portion of the Eastmost parcel associated with this building, the back corner, was rezoned, because it had been a...
They're not gonna do it.
...a split zone, I think is what it's called. The front portion was property, evident for years and years, zoned commercial, and the back part was zoned residential. So they asked for and received permission of the board and county commissioners during the comprehensive rezoning process to change that small portion of that one parcel. The other issue is a private contractual civil matter between you and the property owners, and that is dealing with the homeowners association. So as I understand it, and this is just my understanding based on the letter from Mr. Perone, that there was a homeowners association restriction on all three of those properties, I think, at one time. And at one time, they got parcels 20 and 21 released from the restriction, and they asked for permission from a number of you for release of the same restriction on parcel 19. The restriction was, regardless of zoning, there was a civil contractual relationship between all the people who were part of that homeowners association, that they couldn't use that property for commercial unless they got that homeowners association release. Do you understand the difference?
Yeah, but we don't have a homeowners association.
That's, I guess, a repeat restriction or other thing, so that's what Mr. Perone's letter said. So that was a civil matter between the various neighbors, that had nothing to do with the county, that has nothing to do with the county zoning. But if the property hadn't been zoned commercial since...
So what is it, what is it zoned now?
It's all commercial. That little portion was changed.
Yeah. The signs are...
Yeah, you could, yeah, I mean, what is, like, for sale sign or something? You could do some types of residential in commercial zone, like assisted living facilities and things like that.
No, no, but also, just with residential, you can also do residential, if there was residential there in commercially zoned property prior. You can keep it residential for as long as you want. You can keep, if you're living in a commercially zoned area and all of a sudden it's now commercially zoned, nobody's kicking you out, you can stay exactly where you are and actually sell it residential. So maybe that also happened, but I'll, I'm gonna follow up. It sounds like there's more, I wanna say confusion, but convoluted answers, then we need to get straight, so, I'll follow up. So, what else? Yes, ma'am?
I think I'd say Perone's here, we need Eldersburg, because we like Eldersburg Way Blood, we do not like to come to Rangers Town. And I think that, I think this storage unit would be the catalyst, it's dark, it's a corner, all the way down 26. I don't want buses over here, I don't want cars over here, I wouldn't stay anywhere similar to what it is. I understand there has to be growth, I would love to move in, I'm a good old home, so I understand the book. But, why can't we fight for what we want? Pay our taxes here. There were guys who used to be living, and it was like, you gotta work to sell it. I'm tired of all the time, the one or two people, the owner of the place, they want to buy it. They get all the rights, and all these homes are gonna be valued, they're going to be ... Why do we have to suffer? And I know, I'm not asking for a solution, it's just a restriction. It's like, then we go to, say, legislature, and we pass for, you know, changing the sub-land tax. Why can't we defend ourselves? And that's what we elected people to do.
Okay, and, so, two things. One, I moved here for the exact same reasons you did. You know, maybe a little bit later, I moved here in 2007, and I was stationed in Fort Meade, but I'll tell you, while there and while in other places, I was deployed multiple times for years on end, and the community wrapped their arms around Audrey and the kids. So that's why I'm doing what I'm doing now. There's no other reason, really. There's no other reason. Definitely not a politician. It's just service, I just wanna give back the way I was. So, understand, I do not believe that a drawbridge should be placed on Liberty Reservoir going from east to west. I do believe there's opportunity here. I don't like mass transportation, I like, you know, our community, the way our community is. I like the services we provide, the parks that we have, the school system that we have, the commercial where it is. Growth will occur, we know that, because it has to, in order to maintain and keep up with the services that we deserve, fire EMS being a very large one. Fighting for, I mean, that's what we are doing. I mean, that's what you're doing. And, you know, it's not one voice, you know, I've heard this before, I've heard two things, well, I've heard lots, but, one is, well, there's only one voice down here out of five. It's one out of five, and there's four others, and they're fighting. Well, no, my colleagues are not fighting me, okay? It's five of us working together on what's best in Carroll County. I've also heard where people get money from, developers and all that kinda garbage, no. It's not relevant, and if you look at what we're doing here, it's not about growth just to grow. I've never believed in that, and I don't believe my colleagues have either. I believe in partnership. I believe walking into the lion's den when necessary, and hearing and listening to what you have to say, and then coming out with better solutions. So what I'm gonna, I'll tell you what I'm gonna do, is I will reach out to Mr. Perone and the seller this afternoon on some of the discussion from today and then also after tonight. I am gonna talk to the Beatty property and potential buyers of that, and see what makes sense there. I'm an advocate for you. My goal, or my focus is not to build. My focus is not to not build, it's to do what's best for you, what incentivizes you. You know, that's what I do. And all I ask is, continue to talk to me, continue to share your sentiments and your concerns with others, so people, like you said, how do you get the word out, so people know? Social media does have its value, limited for, you know, unless people are just so fired up that they wanna get something off their his or her chest, that's fine, but it doesn't do much when people are just saying, "This is corrupt over here, and this is why they're doing this over here." Ask me the questions, and we'll give you the answers. People think that, you know, the sheriff's department's out there with all these speech traps so they can get more money to build something. It was shared, that's absolutely not true. And you can't, you just can't make that up. But that's how, that's how things are done, to be honest. It's not quick. It's not just going to legislation saying, "Do this." Now, I will take that and work with them on a potential opportunity to find out what we can and cannot do. Yeah, that's...
You're probably wrong, that we, well, we all of Carroll County, but can we choose something that is valid?
Sure, sure.
Now, here, we need more schools, and we need better...
So, yeah, going back, it's, schools are very, very difficult. Construction of schools are very difficult. Honestly, I just, I cannot make that up. It's not just about building a school. Every school that we have in the county, is there 40 of them, or something like that? And everyone has a priority for capital projects, for HVAC systems, roofs and other projects. If we were to just replace a roof like every two years, think about that, that would take 80 years by the time we got done with all the roofs. So, schools are very, very challenging to, one, maintain as capital projects, and then, two, get state funds for them. And, oh, by the way, in a mix of that, as was shared, was the blueprint and the operational costs that are unfunded. So this is definitely a bounce. I mean, my kids went to the schools here, and I couldn't have asked for anything better. So, but, no, I understand, and that's what this is. The answers aren't just today, the answers are, can be continuing, so, yes?
So I watched the, I was on three people that were watching, you, and the school board, me, what have we had?
There was four, I was watching, no.
And so someone mentioned innovation, so we're gonna have to be innovative in this county to, they wanna double their budget, basically, go from 6.7 million to 13 million dollars annually. And so Chris brings up a point about thinking about the county as a whole. I have to wonder, you know, I love the farmland, just like anybody else does, but I have to wonder about the real estate income tax impact that having 100,000 acres, one-third of our county, of which none of it is in South Carroll, preserved. So you can have a 100-acre farm pay the same $3,000 a year that I'm paying, and that 100-acre farm is now not going to generate the property taxes that my quarter acre or half acre yard does. So it's really a big picture idea. I'm sitting here kind of meekly putting my hand up, but in that meeting, you all talked about innovation, new ideas, I love this idea about St. Mary's County, I brought up something similar in our last town hall. You know, should we step back from that goal of 100,000 acres? Is it time that we hit a tipping point? That we cannot fund the sheriff's office, the school system, and the MS? And is that really a goal that we can have moving forward?
Right.
And that is my, like, big picture thought for you guys?
Absolutely.
And Parks and Rec, the city over here, I haven't had a chance to talk, one of my little pet projects, you know, is working on more parks and having accessibility to parks.
Right.
They get such a small amount of money.
They do.
It's incredibly small.
So, yeah.
So it's just a big picture idea, like, as a county, have we reached a tipping point where we need real estate income taxes to support the infrastructure?
No, and I appreciate, and with Parks and Rec, just let you know that two of the schools went to the state legislature for playground dollars, and the Baker Foundation...
Chris Baker.
What's that?
Nathan.
Yeah, Nathan Chris Baker. His dad was my son's wrestling coach.
The schools, right?
No, 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 I apologize. Two were for the schools, but Nathan Chris Baker Foundation is asking for money to be matched for Freedom Park. Okay, so, so that's parks, so we, 'cause you're right, we don't get a lot with parks, but that is innovation, that is thinking outside, saying, "How can we find dollars?" As far as the ag preservation, well, you can't go backwards. So you got 77,000 acres preserved, that's their property owner's rights, that they already have, you know, made those arrangements, and, you know, you don't wanna touch that. Moving forward, should we take the money that we commit annually for ag preservation and no longer commit it, or take a pause on that, one and a half million or two million dollars, whatever it may be, that we commit and say, "No, we're not gonna do it now, and we'll only use the state programs"? That is potential, and that will be discussed. So we're gonna start having our budget workshops with my four colleagues, and having these very detailed conversations. And I tell you right now, I will bring it up. It doesn't mean I agree with it, but I will put it on the table. I will talk about ag preservation, if it's not brought up, I will talk about taxes, I will talk about different priorities. One of the priorities was putting a sheriff's, you know, district facility down here in Eldersburg, a station by the library. We took that off because we didn't have the funds, okay? So that was one of those projects. So we have added and we have taken off. Exactly what you said, this is not a document, the budget, to be put on a shelf and just say, "That's it." There are priorities for this year, but we gotta look at what's happening. And the schools, and what's happening in the schools is significant, and how are we gonna make those, meet those demands? So all of this will be on the table, absolutely. Your input while we're doing this, all of these discussions are open. Your input is so valuable. Now, you cannot text me while I'm having these conversations in session, 'cause that breaks the rules, but you can give me ideas before, or give me ideas afterwards, say, "Hey, have you thought about this?", or, "Why the heck did you bring this up? This is another way of looking at it." That's really, really important, 'cause it's not my budget, it's our budget, and we just have to recognize that. Okay, what else? We went over by 10 minutes, and we got one last brief question. The answer's three. Now, go ahead.
So, in my neighborhood, there was a call that, kids have a tendency, I'm assuming they're kids, have a tendency to find themselves there at night, on the weekends. My kids keep finding, and we keep finding, liquor bottles, cans, weed. I've called the police before, but I feel like it's not being watched, it's a dead end. There's a lot of, like, over break, we saw it at least three different times, people had been there. Is there anything being done to...
Would you run?
This is at the Andaleazy Morning Way.
Off of Maryville.
In Marysville.
Have you called it before?
Yes, several times.
I'll give you my contact information.
Yeah.
And just get your address and everything, I'll put it up.
My concern is, these are obviously underage kids, 'cause they're sneaking around to do this stuff, and then they're driving.
We've had a couple of words that we're gonna have sooner, and a lot of it, if it's a dead end, and we can put some lighting and some things up that kind of scare people away, we've been successful with that other dead end areas.
I don't know that we want lights there, I mean, it would be a decent idea, but we're really in the middle of... I mean, it would be a decent idea, but we're really in the middle of nowhere, but, I mean, some increased patrols would be great.
We'll look at it.
Thank you.
Okay, again, this was your time. I know I brought my team with me, my staff, to answer the questions and give them the opportunity, but more importantly, it was your time to have the questions and insight for us. So I really appreciate that. Going to do the same thing at 6:30. It's going to be a repeat of what you've done. If you want to come back or have further questions, feel free. But if not, I really appreciate the attention and opportunity to spend time with you today. So thanks.